We are, so we can.
All right, we need to call this meeting to order. Ask the uh members of the public to be, please bear with me a little bit tonight, I don't have much of a voice. But I will attempt to do the best that I can. All right, welcome everybody to our regular city council meeting for today, Monday, April the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. For the record, all members of council are here with the exception of Council Bueller and Council Ripley, and they both have asked for an excused absence, and if there's no objection from council. Seeing none, they are both excused. And then also, uh Fire Chief Holbrook is also absent, he's not feeling well, so. He's also excused. All right, do we have someone here this evening to do an invocation? All right, I might ask you to all, please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we bow our heads in prayer, I'm going to read from Philippians four six. Be careful for nothing but everything by prayer and supplication with Thanksgiving. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I ask that you would pour out your spirit in your hand upon this meeting tonight. I pray that you would guide our councilmen and women. Tonight. And I ask that as they discuss the matters regarding our city, I pray that they would choose to do what is right. I pray that their motivation and everything that they want to do is good for the people. And not their own agenda. I pray that above all, that this council will solve any city problems and make good policies to address these issues. I ask that the spirit of wisdom and understanding council might knowledge and the fear of the Lord would fall upon them tonight to help us solve any concerns. May the council counsel with excellence to let there be unity among them. Most of all, I pray that everything be done tonight to honor you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. First item of business this evening is public comments. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks at a council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff for review and or research for presentation at a future council meeting. And we would ask that you, as you approach the microphone to make your public comment, that you would please state your name and the city of residence. You don't have to give your exact street address. I have a list here of a number of people, so we'll start with Alessiana Aguirre. Did I say it right?
Hi, I'm Alessiana Gary. I live on Harrison Avenue here in Sunnyside. Today I want to talk about something that might seem a little out of the ordinary for a sixth grader to talk to you about, but it's actually quite important chickens. I know that the previous council did not want chickens in Sunnyside, but I think it's something worth reconsidering. Here's why. At this time, the only citizens benefiting from chickens are those who are not abiding by the current code. You see, by restricting chickens, you're only benefiting. Sorry. You're only punishing those of us who would abide by the rules and take care of the chickens in a responsible way. It's unfair to penalize responsible citizens for the actions of a few who may not follow the regulations. First and foremost, chickens are incredibly useful animals. They provide us with nutritious eggs, which are packed with protein and essential vitamins. Not only that, but chickens also help control pests like bugs and insects, including the dreaded Japanese beetle. They act as natural pest controllers, keeping our gardens and yards free from unwanted critters. Secondly, chickens are eco-friendly. Unlike other livestock animals such as cows or pigs, chickens have a much smaller carbon footprint. They require less water, land, and food to thrive. Plus, their waste can be composted and used as fertilizer. Now, let's talk about responsibility. Raising chickens teaches us valuable life lessons. It requires dedication, commitment, and hard work. We taking care of animals instills a sense of responsibility and empathy in us. We learn to prioritize their well-being, ensuring they have proper food, water, and shelter. These are skills that will benefit us not only now, but also in the future. In conclusion, chickens are not just birds that cluck around. They can be valuable members of our community. They provide us with food, help sustain the environment, and teach us responsibility. Therefore, I urge you all to reconsider the benefits of allowing chickens in Sunnyside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And as you stated, council has considered this in the past, and we are more than willing to reconsider again in the future. So thank you for that. Next name on my list is Janet Aguirre.
I'm a lot shorter than my daughter. Um, I am Janet Aguirre uh from Sunnyside. And I come to you today to um thank you. I know you hear a lot of complaints daily, you know, each week that you guys meet, and I just want to thank you for um airing these meetings. Um, they mean a lot to our family. We're not able to come to everyone, but we do watch them as a family. And that's actually what brought our daughter here today was that she knows where change needs to happen, and that's in front of you, and she wanted to be a part of that. So thank you so much, and I fully support her. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Monica Niemeyer.
Uh Monica Niemeyer, uh Sunnyside, I'm actually here on behalf of Rotary, but really quick, I I gotta take a moment to um recognize the two Aguirres, the younger and the more mature. Um, I don't know if you realize this yet, but what you've done is very powerful. To be able to stand up and speak and say what you feel is an amazing gift, and you're going to be your most powerful resource. The sooner you know it now, the stronger you will be. I just wanted to recognize you for that. Thank you. Um, so hello, everyone, and happy National Volunteer Month. So my name is Monica Niemeyer. And I am the president of Sunnyside Noon Rotary. And at our meeting today, we had a wonderful surprise visitor, Miss Councilmember Karen Vasquez. Vasquez, and she told us about the changes that council has recently made to the proclamations. And that today the council will be talking about recognizing volunteers. Rotary would like to say thank you and share what volunteering means to us. In Rotary, we have four truths. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? These are the steps we take in helping others and actually how we treat one another. It's a valuable, it's one of the most valuable things that I found in Rotary, and I think many could learn from it. Volunteering is an amazing action. I am sure many of us, maybe if not all, have felt at times wondering who we are and why are we here? While volunteering cannot tell you who it is you are to be, it can show you the kind of person you are. Volunteering has amazing ability to show you who you are when you are giving and helping others when they need it the most. So thank you for recognizing us volunteers, the ones in schools, sports, clubs, organizations, churches, and others I'm sure I have missed, foundations. There you go. Foundations, and I'm sure there's others I have missed. So on behalf of Sunnyside Noon Rotary, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Niemeyer.
He asked us to be in the record thing, the record. I know there's a real word, but I don't know what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk will take care of that, make sure it's included. In the record thing. Yeah, I like that term. We may adopt that one officially. All right, next name is Sandra Lindy.
I'm Sandra Lindy. I live on Phipps Road, so it's not, no, that's my old house. I live on Maple Grove Road, but Sunnyside is my town, and I am actually here to compliment you too also. I love what the people have already said. I love this community. I think it's good when we can all talk. I also am very proud of what we started to do with your resolve, your revolving loan fund application. It was so great a couple of weeks ago to hear what the people had come and asked for and that you granted it. I'm certainly excited about the newspaper wanting it to be local here even state. And I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate the work that the leaders put here in Sunnyside. Thank you.
And the last name on my list for this. The last name on my list is Tony Soto.
Name is Tony Soto, and I'm from Sunnyside, Washington. I have a complaint to make. I believe you guys should pay attention to what goes on in our city because on Friday, somebody put out detour signs at the end of Parkland uh park, and then at the end of my property, uh detour signs. Fine, I thought, oh, big equipment, oh, something exciting coming, but no, there was nothing because that on Saturday, the wind blew and it blew those detour signs all over the place. And then I got up Sunday morning and they were gone. Okay, to me, you wasted time, you wasted money, and you wasted manpower. Why were the detour signs up for? Thank you.
I'm sure we can find an answer to that question and there might be somebody just looking for detour signs. I'm not sure. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, please be assured that your comments are heard, that we take notes during your comments, that we look for answers to your questions, and we very much appreciate when you say nice things about us because it doesn't happen nearly as often as we would love it to. So again, thank you. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following minutes, approve the minutes of the March four, twenty twenty-four workshop. Approve the minutes of the March eleven, twenty twenty-four special meeting study session. Payroll vouchers, approve payroll voucher numbers one one nine four seven eight through one one nine four eight three, and wire transfers as listed for six hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents for the period ending on March twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Claim vouchers, approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight nine zero two through one zero eight nine three five, and wire transfers as listed for ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents for the period ending on March twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight nine three six through one zero eight nine seven zero, and wire transfers as listed for one hundred eight thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for the period ending on March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Council members, is there any items you wish to remove for discussion from the consent agenda? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thirty-three eighty-five.
Three, three, eight, five. Any, anyone else? All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the item is yours.
Uh Vambo Excavating, we paid them to clean out two water meter bolts. Right?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Okay, just wanted to understand why, I guess, our maintenance department didn't do this.
These, I believe, from the water department were two uh big uh big industrial bolts that were uh they contracted out because they either they didn't have the equipment at the time or something. Um, they're not your actual just water meter, they're the the big like apartment complex style. Um, and so the the supervisor had hired it out.
You say when they didn't have the equipment, do you know what equipment there?
Um, I think it's based on the depth to um the the shoring to get in there. The bolts were in bad shape, so they hired a contractor to come in and do it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Hearing none. What is the desire council on this item?
Approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Council Heart, second by Council Fausto to approve the consents agenda, debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye. Motion carries. Remember, there's only five of us tonight. Active agenda. Revolving Loan Fund Application Ibrahim Mustafa Adams Wonderland Consider Approving a Resolution Authorizing the Distribution of a Revolving Loan Fund in the Amount of Twenty-five Thousand Dollars and Allowing the City Manager to Enter into an Agreement with a Revolving Loan Fund Recipient, Recipient, yeah, I can say it. Ibrahim Mustafa to Make Business Improvement to Adams Wonderland. Mr. Mustafa, would you like to come up microphone and just have an opportunity to share a little bit what what is Adams Wonderland and what you plan to do with this money? Thank you for being here tonight.
So from Under Wonderland, it's uh for kids in indoor playground. So from like basically like from like one year to like sixty years old. But we try to like make the business there a bit bigger. We can like space in the back, so try to get, I'd like more stuff.
Okay, council members, any questions for Mr. Mustafa? Ms. Hart.
When you say stuff, what kind of things are you trying to do with your, try to expand it?
So try to do like more games too for small kids. Like uh
I don't have any small kids, kind of.
Yep. Like we got like a thousand square feet, like a room in the back, so try to add like more stuff for the kids for activities.
Okay.
For this one.
Okay.
Let's go on.
I know you you currently have, uh, you can host birthday parties, right?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Back there.
Yep, so we try to add a little like room for the birthday party too.
Okay, is is this gonna help bring in more children, more kids, more?
Yeah, because the thing is that the room we have, we take like almost like twenty people. So for the other one, we're gonna add, probably gonna take like thirty-five, forty, so probably adds like more business too.
Okay.
Ms. Vasquez.
What, so what do you currently have in there? Can you explain or elaborate a little bit more of the reason why you started this business and why you chose Sunnyside and everything that you provide for our community?
So I live in Yak, we're not in Sunnyside.
Okay.
So I used to work in Sunnyside last year. So I was like, no, it's like, it's nothing for kids for in Sunnyside.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I got like this idea for this business too. And so far, I work out good.
And what all do you have in there right now?
Uh, so I got like um like, you mean like what kind of games inside there?
Yeah.
So we do like a trampoline, climbing walls, um, we like ninja course and like a public one too.
Okay.
For this one, it's like nine thousand square feet.
Nice. I I've seen photos, so I have an idea, just wanted to get more information.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Fausto.
How's it been going lately? Because I know you just opened, uh Deputy Mayor, I know you posted on Facebook that you were there with your kids and they're they're really enjoying it. My nieces go there all the time. My brother takes his kids there all the time. So I I actually want to thank you for bringing this into the community because now my family gets to benefit from it. Um, and it's true that we need more of this in Sunnyside. Um, so but how has it been going overall? How's um the customers, how uh how's the success rate? Um, obviously you need more space, so you're requesting this loan. But how has has it been going overall since?
Since October, like six months, so far, like so far, it's ready, like went very good, you know? Like, so like go up there a bit too. When it get like too cold, it get there a bit slower. When it get like too hot, it get like more busy too.
Okay.
But it's like when you're in school or something, they get like more busy too, especially like a spring break.
Great.
Well, Mr. Mustafa, I want to tell you that I, this past weekend, brought my three grandchildren and my daughter, their mother to enjoy your facilities, and they had a fantastic time. My one-year-old granddaughter just had a blast in the balls and on the trampolines, jumping up and down. My grandson just loved climbing across the Ninja Mysterials and um, everybody was just absolutely delighted with what you offered. And when your brother explained to me what the addition was going to be and how you were planning on laying that out, I think it's an absolutely fantastic addition. I think it's got a lot of potential. I'm kind of excited about it. I am also, as Ms. Fausto said, I am glad you're here in Sunnyside. I think this is the kind of thing that we need for our kids, just alternative activities. And like I said, they had a lot of fun, and they were tired afterwards, which is exactly what we wanted. Um, any of you who have grandchildren and you you forget just how busy kids that age are as they move on and graduate.
When they want their kids to sleep, I got lots of customers like after eight, you know?
Yeah, good time. So, no, it was a fantastic facility. I'm really impressed with what you have. Any further questions?
I haven't been there. Do you also sell food?
Oh, food? No, we don't have any.
No, are are you planning to maybe sell?
Also, I was like gonna do it before, but it's too much mess up by the foods.
Uh.
Those people like get food inside or something. So basically, it's not even worth it just to keep everything clean too.
All right, further questions or comments?
Also want, thank you. You know, I have five kids. It's hard for me to take that two-year-old.
I'll get you this combo, no worries.
Yeah, I mean, when I take them, they 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 enjoy it. I I'd rather see them, I'd rather see them there jumping around, you know, it's it's somewhere safe. Uh, so definitely thank you for we're bringing.
Okay.
I'll be very quick. Have you had a grand opening or have you reached out to to Ms. Renteria about having a grand opening for your business?
Uh, no, I haven't done it to.
Okay, well, we need to do that. We need to get you a grand opening. Um, you can reach out to her, you can ask her any questions, and then we can get that set up for you. I think it would be great. Yeah.
Appreciate you guys.
All right. Thank you, sir, for your comments. All right, council, we've had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Mustafa. Uh, what is the desire council on this item?
Move to approve.
I second.
All right, we got a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Council Fausto to approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and allowing city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipient Ibrahim Mustafa to make business improvement to Adams Wonderland. Debate on this item.
No, but I did just want to say a comment. So I also wanted to say thank you. I don't have any kids, but I have a lot of friends who have kids, and they all love it. So thank you, and keep it, keep it up.
All right. Then, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I too vote aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, sir.
I'd just like to say I abstain.
Oh, I did not catch that. Thank you for that. All right, item B. American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Funds Commitment Update Consider Approving a Resolution Authorizing the Commitment and Expenditure of Funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. And for members of the audience, uh, council had a special meeting last week on April eight where we discussed this um in exhaustive detail, and then we discussed it a little bit more in our study session this evening. Um, but at any rate, Mr. Fire Chief, or Police Chief, sorry.
Either one. Uh, Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. Um, you have in front of you just a resolution to update some of those spending buckets that we had established in twenty twenty-two um to try and and make sure that we're making the best use of these funds um and the council's um desire for spending them. So I think we did a really good job. Personally, I was very excited to see the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards the dog shelter or the animal shelter, excuse me, but um I think you guys made a lot of meaningful changes, and I think we will be able to expend this money before the end of the year or have it all under contract um and make the best use of it.
All right, questions or comments? Hearing none. What is council's desire on this item?
To approve the uh resolution to real allocate the expenditure of the ARPA funds.
Day second.
All right, we've got a motion by Council Heart, second by Council Vasquez to approve the resolution as stated. Debate on this item.
It is something. I know you're gonna bring to council updates regularly, and I have one that you gave me on the, when we had the finance committee. Um, if if you could break it down a little bit more, if there's a way to break it down, because it's it's just because it's this community improvement. And then it just doesn't break down which one was youth programs and which one was for the pool upgrades.
So I I revamped my, I think at the finance subcommittee meeting, we sort of talked about how I was revamping that spreadsheet because I had initially built it um in order to help me with my ARPA reporting to the federal government, but it wasn't designed for these kinds of presents. So I did a better job. So that that second page of the resolution or the exhibit A um is how I believe I'll present it going forward, where it shows the total, like that category at the top, and then it breaks down each individual program below. Um, along with the list of the things that fall under those mon, those amounts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good job.
Great, further debate? All right, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye. Motion passes. Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation Consider Approving a Resolution Proclaiming April two thousand twenty-four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Sunnyside, Washington. Council, questions, comments, discussion on this item?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve the resolution proclaiming April twenty-four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month for in Sunnyside.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Council Heart, second by the Deputy Mayor. And thank you for reading the motion into the record, Ms. Hart. All right, debate on this item? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye. Motion carries. With that, I will attempt, with my voice not behaving very well, attempt to read the motion into the record. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is observed every April in the United States to increase public awareness, promote the importance of consent, and educate communities about the prevention of sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. And whereas sexual assault affects individuals of all ages, races, ethnicities, genders, sexual orientations, abilities, and social economic backgrounds, and whereas over thirty or fifty-three percent of women and over twenty-nine percent of men reported experiencing sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas the city of Sunnyside is committed to fostering a safe and inclusive environment where all residents are treated with dignity and respect, free from any form of sexual violence or harassment. And whereas the city supports programs and initiatives that work to provide resources, advocacy, and support for survivors of sexual assault, while also promoting education, prevention, and awareness efforts. And whereas all residents are encouraged to actively engage in conversations surrounding consent, respect, and boundaries, and to take a standing in sexual assault, harassment, and abuse in our community. And now therefore, I Dean Burusma, Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Sunnyside, and call upon all community members, institutions, organizations to raise awareness about sexual assault, support survivors, and work towards the prevention of sexual violence in our community. Testimony whereof, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this eighth day of April the year two thousand twenty-four. And I am signing that. And I understand that we've got an individual in the audience from Lighthouse that would like to say a couple of words. We invite you guys to come up for it for that. And I'm sorry, council, if there's any objections. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Linda, and I am living here in Sunnyside, and I have been um a domestic violence sexual assault advocate at the Lighthouse here in Sunnyside for over twenty-seven years. Um, I love my job. I um enjoy what I do. April is um Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we appreciate the proclamation and being recognized for this. Um, our agency does this every year, and the month of April, we do Walk a Mile in Our Shoes. And uh what that would be is that we would take anyone that would like to walk a mile in our shoes and these these little stilettos, these little fancy uh bling blings in the red. Um, we also have uh our nominated, that we nominated, uh Pastor Bob, would you all know who Pastor Bob is? And this year he will be um the stilettos and these little sparkly ones. Um, so what our event will take place on um April the twenty, April twenty-seventh. Um, that's on a Saturday, and that would be at the bank right across the street from Walmart here, and we're gonna walk the path, which is from there all the way to Fiesta Foods and then back. And you will see men wearing these. Uh, in the past, we've had a lot of our um Sunnyside um law, law officers, officers uh take part in this, and they have, let me tell you, you can't miss this event because you want to go see these officers in these heels, and let me tell you, they can rock these heels. So um we would like to invite everyone to come out, and everything that we um do and the money that we raise, the pledges that we take, go back to help victims of uh sexual assault, whether it be a a gas card or um uh a card to get them away and put them in a safe place, um far away from the perpetrator, whether it be um male or female. Um, also, we um provide them with uh needs uh when they go to the hospital for um rape kits. They do not, are not able to take the clothing that they went in there with. So we have to carry rape kits in our cars uh as in backpacks, and we fill them up with clothing. So when we get done with them there, which would take like about four to five hours, six hours ti- sometimes, being at the hospital in that same room with the victim. Uh, victims are of all ages. Uh, so we um, you know, do this, we provide the legal advocacy, which is follow them through the court system. Um, also getting them a protection order, and um thanks to our Sunnyside Police Department who are amazing to serving those orders as well, whether they be um domestic violence, sexual assault orders. Anything you want to share?
Um, so, yeah, uh, the other thing too is we have, we have these shirts that we're wearing right now. Um, we will be selling those um as well, so if anybody wants those, we'll have them, I believe, there at the event as well. Um, and yeah, for the shoes, I mean, if you want to volunteer to wear the shoes, or if you want to donate for somebody else to wear the shoes, you guys can have contests, whatever it is.
So, and we encourage everyone, and um again, we want to thank um our city council for inviting us over and for doing the proclamation as well, because I don't remember or recall one being done in a long time. So I just want to thank you for that. And then also want to remind you that October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for being here. Um, so in order to participate, then, do we just show up, or do we have to sign up somewhere?
You can show up at the event on the twenty-seventh, and it's
There is a second.
You can show up and um sign up the forms that we did give you. There's some pledges there that you can, if you want to sponsor anyone else um and the city council members or anyone in the community, you're more than welcome to do that and just take up the pledges, and then you can bring them. And um we're taking all the pledges, uh collecting everything on the nineteenth of April, so like that, we can make sure who's first, second, and third. So, yeah.
And then my last question, do you have shoes in men's size?
Oh, yeah, these are all men. These are all men's shoes. These are all uh in men's shoes. Yes.
You may have some for me, Ms. Hart. Thank you.
They're like, um, they're like sturdy, so I mean, they're not gonna hopefully break on you. They're pretty sturdy from the bottom too, so they're kind of like specially for men to wear, so. They're kind of like specially for men to wear. So they're wider and you know, yeah, so.
Okay.
Should be good. Yeah.
You're good to go. If you wanna try on the sparkly ones, you're more than welcome to try them on.
I say y'all try them on right now.
Try them on right now. Well, you guys stick around till after the meeting. I'll give them a try.
Alrighty, thank you.
Mayor, can I get a picture? Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may have.
With them?
Yeah, do you want them up here?
Yeah, does the rest of council want to be in the picture?
Okay, why don't you guys come back up here, carry your shoes by all means.
Think the men on the council ought to be in the picture since uh they're.
Don't wanna stand up.
That's because I don't wanna stand up. Number two, I don't wanna wear heels anymore. And this is for men to support women of domestic violence, et cetera.
I have, yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit right. It's this one over here. I'm sitting right here, honey. My legs are not working tonight. So it's Rosa Linda and.
Myra.
What's your?
Myra.
Myra? Thank you both.
And we have to um thank the interim city manager slash police chief for helping keeping me organized. Because all the information, the questions I was asking was right here on the second page. I just hadn't made it that far through. All right. Next item on our agenda. Item D, National Volunteer Week Proclamation. Consider approving a resolution proclaiming April twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four, National Volunteer Week in Sunnyside, Washington. Council, comments or questions?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution proclaiming April twenty-first through twenty-seventh as na- nine uh two thousand and twenty-four as National Volunteer Week in Sunnyside.
One day second.
All right, motion by Council Hart, second by Council Vasquez. We have debate on this item.
No, but I actually wanted to comment something.
You make comment.
Julia beat me to it. So I really quick just wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers in our community. I know there are a lot, a lot of them and it just really, really makes a huge impact in our community. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone. I myself just always helping. I see a lot of other people who also volunteer constantly. And it's just a light of hope and it's really amazing to see people do things with no other benefit or with no other agenda. And it's really amazing to even see this new foundation starting up with Rob Lehman. So. I have a list of a few people I wanna shout out, but I know there's a lot of others. So I'm sorry if I missed you. But I wanted to just thank Rob Lehman and Charlotte Lehman for starting up the foundation. That's completely volunteer. So thank you for your time and thank you for donating food every month. I think you guys got inspired by last year and started. The trend going all the way to Easter and upcoming events. So thank you so much for that. Also wanna shout out Amy Rubio for doing amazing events. Venus, she actually just came and prayed today. And Venus actually dedicates one day out of each week and she goes to the high school and she takes snacks for the high schoolers. And she goes and talks to them and she goes and participates and just wants to check up on them and know what they're doing. So Venus is someone who's very special in our community. So I wanted to shout her out. I'd also like to shout out. Perla Cepeda for everything that she does. I even wanna shout out Victoria Hernandez because she goes above and beyond in her job. And I also wanna give a huge shout out to Maria Fernandez, who's actually right here. And she does a lot for our community as well, um all the way up to not just for Sunnyside, but even Maptin and constantly volunteering her time in Theodora. And my name, my your name just slipped, but also um yourself, right?
Felicitas.
Felicitas. And because they don't only focus on the community where they live, but they expand to other communities. So much so that they go and give waters to other residents in Maptin. And that's all because that comes from their heart and that says a lot about people. Also really wanna give a huge shout out to all the church children teachers. There's a lot of teachers in so many churches and they do this because they want to do it. They don't ever get one dollar and I know this because I know so many teachers and so many. Youth ministers and so many people who are constantly involved and constantly giving back to our community. So huge shout out to all all of you. And huge shout out to even teachers who stay to do the extra work. I had amazing teachers who, when I struggled in math or whatever subject it was, they would stay two hours extra to help me. And that tells a lot about teachers who are passionate of their jobs. So I just wanna give a huge shout out. To even Mrs. Stark, she was an amazing teacher of mine and I know she stopped for a while, but then she started up again. And she would stay in her classroom till it was dark out and she does it with passion and she does it with love. So shout out to all of you. And I don't know if I missed anyone else, but I just wanted to shout everyone out because volunteering is very important. So thank you and never stop despite if anyone ever criticizes you or if people don't say thank you to you. That's why I'm saying thank you right now. So keep it up and you know, it'll come back.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. I think uh. What you said is incredibly accurate and can be echoed by each and every one of us. Um, as I had said earlier. The city of Sunnyside, in fact, no city would function, the events would not function, all the things that we'd like to do, all the things that we find valuable in our community function because volunteers step up. Um, city staff, uh paid employees don't have the time to do that and their job unless they do that after hours. Um, department heads don't have the time to put that all together. It takes an incredible amount of person hours. To put on an event such as a lighted implement parade or Cinco de Mayo or even a basketball tournament. It takes an incredible commitment. And so thank you to everyone in our community, especially tonight, who. Um, who does volunteer, who steps up. And like you said, whether you teach Sunday school or whether you uh put on a huge event. It's incredibly valuable to our community. We have a a motion before us. But is this section for debate?
I know, but I just think.
So we have a motion before us. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, I two vote aye. Motion carries. Notice I assumed nobody was gonna vote no.
Yeah.
All right, that being completed, I'm going to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize and honor the countless individuals who selflessly contribute to the betterment of society. Which plays a vital role in fostering compassion, empathy and a sense of community. And whereas volunteering within education, healthcare, environmental sustainability and social welfare empowers individuals to make a positive impact. On the lives of others, instilling a sense of fulfillment and purpose. And whereas volunteers of all ages, backgrounds and abilities continue to dedicate their time, skills and resources. To be an integral part of our community and it is essential to continue to give. In order to improve the quality of life for all citizens and make a lasting impact on the lives of others. And whereas each year a week is designated in our nation to recognize those who give of themselves. And encourage all citizens to become involved in volunteer work. And it is a fitting time to thank all individuals, groups and businesses who have given time, energy and resources to this community through volunteer service. Now therefore I Dean Burusma, Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington. By virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-four. As National Volunteer Week. And I think the dates were omitted from there. Where we are, April twenty-one through twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four. As National Volunteer Week in the city of Sunnyside to honor and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. Let us continue to recognize and support volunteers, inspiring more individuals to engage in this noble endeavor. Together we can create a more inclusive, compassionate and thriving society. In testimony whereof, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed. Done at the city Sunnyside this eighth day of April in the year two thousand and twenty-four. And it would really be cool if we could get all the volunteers in the city Sunnyside up here for a picture, but that would really be more than this facility could take. So um I do wanna say that, you know, the city of Yakima, I think, is doing a blood drive during National Volunteer Week. And I have been handed a note that says there will be a red clo- cross blood drive here in Sunnyside during Volunteer Week as well. It will be at the Presbyterian Church on Friday, April twenty-sixth. So if you wish to participate is as a volunteer in that way, there is always a need for blood. And so please consider participating in that. Item E, Complete Streets Award. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a funding award from the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board. For pedestrian improvements and execute all documents and authorize the city manager to execute a task order with HLA Engineering. And land surveying incorporated, Mr. City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. So yes, uh, I bring to you the uh Transportation Improvement Board uh that had released an application. Um, that were back in uh February twenty-four, the city submitted an application. Uh, the application submitted for TIB consideration, the series of ADA improvements. Um, around the schools in the amount of a million dollars. Uh, TIB came back, uh offered an award in the amount of five hundred thousand. Uh, the proposed improvements were prioritized in terms of worst ADA compliance and the scope of work was reduced to fit within the if. Offered funding award. Uh, there is a fifteen percent cash match requirement. Uh, the improvement will consist of approximately forty-four curb ramps, twenty crosswalks at eight intersections. All of which will currently do not meet the AD requirements. All work must be completed by the end of twenty-four calendar year. These improvements are consistent with the city's six-year transportation improvement plan and the findings of the self-evaluation phase of the ADA transition plan. Um, I'm looking for council to make a motion to authorize cities. Intern city manager to execute the funding agreement and all associated documents with the award. Um, and the task order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying.
Thank you. Council, questions, comments for Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Galvan.
So I I have a sheet right from uh the first time the HLA was here and they had mentioned the million dollars, um. A hundred ADA ramps and a hundred crosswalks. I kinda would like to see what. Those other crosswalks are and what, you know. Kind of. Determine which ones we should, we should tackle.
Well, yeah, I'll go again, when we first came with the the million was just taking. More of those crosswalks that we talked about, we just had to break it down to fit it into five hundred thousand. Again, there's plenty throughout the city that are out of compliant. We just took. The worst ones and broke it down in half to fit it into the five hundred thousand. But, yeah.
I'm. Mr. Hart?
I I think that we should really consider that we have the um. The contract, the funding agreement is in place. The number of uh. Um, ADA and crosswalks and then at the intersections. Um, we know they need to be fixed. We know we're gonna fix the other ones as well. This money has already been. You know, the agreement is there and we have the, so we're asking, all you're asking is for us to just move ahead so we can start the project. With this money.
Or, yes.
To accept the award, the award is. The award is there.
The crosswalks that are.
Right, so the award is there. We need to have it done by the twenty-fourth of this year.
By the end of.
The end of this year. So then I would like to make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute the funding agreement. And all associated documents with the award and the task order with the HLA in uh engineering and last serving. Color survey, Inc.
I had a question.
Okay, so we have a motion. So we have to complete the motion and then.
We have a second, we can go ahead with the discussion.
Miss Hart, we can go on to debate. So do we have a second for the motion? Okay, without a second, the motion dies.
I had a question.
May I ask you a question?
So during the workshop, Julia Hart actually brought up the fact that, yes, we know that there are other roads that need work as well. So what would the timeline be like? So let's say we do approve this and we move forward and I know this is a big project, right? And it needs to be done before two thousand and twenty-four. So if we were to go ahead and do this, then. Moving forward, then how does this timeline look in order to get the other roads that need a lot more work done? Do you know, like more or less idea?
So next year, when another TIB. Project comes out again, sorry. Um, we would apply again for the funding for this type of, just the same way we did on this one, but then we would apply again. For the same amount that we applied for and then we just wait and see for TIB. Comes back with and then we take that second group of. Intersections and. Continue on with that. It's gonna take years to do this. This is not something that we're gonna do in in the next four or five years. It's gonna take. A lot of years. This is just the start.
And you know, so I don't, does anyone else have a question?
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Galvan?
So I know it's gonna take a little long time, but I just think we're starting in the wrong. The wrong starting point at this point with this.
Okay, well, at this point is what we're asking for is accepting the award, I guess later we can. We can come back and 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 go over uh. I guess what intersections I would be priority to council. And.
Okay, uh, Miss, Miss Vasquez.
I have another question. So if we accept the award, can we still go back and try to like scope out what other roads would be best to pursue this plan?
Yeah, I mean, we could.
There, there, I think you would wanna amend your motion to to accept the funding. Um, but not to sign the um. Not to have the city manager execute all the documents and assign the task order.
Okay.
But I believe you can do that. And then maybe we can get HLA back at the next meeting to.
Okay.
Give you this.
And perhaps give us time to reprioritize some of the intersections. And if council wants to see something different, um, you know, the downtown area is a priority as well. We have big events that happen and, you know, we can have five or six thousand people downtown for an event and. Well, it would be convenient for them to have functioning. ADA ramps as well there. So. That is definitely worth considering. Is like uh Mr. Galvan said, we have intersections that are um that have no ramps whatsoever. In town as well. So that's. We can look at that, I think so. But um as Ms. Wonder said, we can amend the motion. To exclude the section that talks about execute all and and execute the task order. So we can certainly do that. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm I'm willing, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna lose this money already. We already invested money with HLA. Uh, we already paid them. So you know, we don't, we don't wanna lose the funding. I think uh we need to amend the motion if Ms. Hart is willing to do that.
Somebody else can make the motion.
Well, the motion was, the motion failed because there wasn't a second. So there is not a motion before us at this point.
Somebody else can make the motion.
Oh, I make the motion to to move, to amend this new motion to approve the award money and to. Go back to reconsider the streets.
With the exception?
With the exception of of going of modifying what streets we're gonna be choosing.
A second. Okay, and did. Madam Court, did you write down the motion as she read it?
I did, I didn't get to, but I'll listen back to the recording.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Vasquez, let's see if I get close to that. Um. So to approve a resolution that we would authorize the city manager to accept funding award from Washington State Transportation Improvement Board for pedestrian improvements. And we can leave it there. Is that the correct motion?
Yes, it's to accept the award.
Okay.
We'll go back to reconsider the roads.
Okay, so that is the motion that will be read into the record then. And so we got a motion by uh Council Vasquez, uh second by a deputy mayor. To accept a funding award from Washington State Department Improvement. Transportation Improvement Board for Pedestrian Improvements. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? I two vote aye. Motion passes. Item F, Freight Mobility Investment Board Funding Application. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city managers to submit a funding application. To the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board for improvements to exit sixty-nine, Mr. City Manager.
I'll again turn this over to Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. So the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board has a call for applications for the six-year Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Program. Federal funding is available to government agencies for improvements to high-volume freight routes categorized as such by uh WashDOT. Uh, Interstate eighty-two is considered a T-one route. And uh the city has obtained support from WashDOT to submit an application for the first phase of improvements at exit sixty-nine. A traffic study was previously prepared that identified roundabout improvements at this exit. Uh, incoming development directly accessing exit sixty-nine has been assessed. A share of the total improvements value until the improvements are constructed. Um. A future apartment complex has been assessed a fee equal to eighteen percent of the total value of one roundabout, which would be phase one. This assessed fee would cover the anticipated thirteen point five percent local agency match required for the use of the federal funding. A concept level drawing is attached for information, has been submitted to Wash Stop for review. The total project cost is estimated are at two million dollars. The application is due April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, so I'm looking for council to make a motion to authorize submission of a grant application to the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board.
Council, questions or comments? Mr. Galan.
How did you guys determine which side of the freeway to start? Um, you're starting on the south side of it. How did you guys determine to start on that one? The south side of the I eighty-two.
Uh, that's just based on the studies that H L A had come up with.
More traffic. Is there a different project that the city could have gone with?
Well, this is the traffic coming in from exit sixty-nine based on the, again, going back to the traffic study that was done.
This is also coming from, uh, Wash Dot as well. This they've identified this as being a key project on that on that corridor. Um, that this is the, there's a roundabout here and they they there will probably be one on the north side as well, but starting from the south, working their way north. This this whole corridor is going to have to be improved over the next, uh, ten years, I would imagine.
Ms. Frauston.
How did this roundabout come about being one of the priorities around infrastructure here? And and I'm thinking, I mean, I I know you mentioned Deputy Mayor just mentioned or asked a question around, um, was there any other projects, um, that we can focus on? How 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 is this at the top of our list? And it's, I mean, it's a two million dollar project.
Um, yes, so so traffic is is measured in trips or level of service. So Wash Dot and the traffic in traffic impact analysis that have have that that have been done in this area have demonstrated that these two exits are, um, they're exceeding their capacity right now. So when something exceeds a a projected capacity, we look at the most cost-effective ways to improve that that core that corridor, that access, whatever that might be. And, um, this this area, given that it's commercial growth, given it's, um, given its potential for future commercial growth, this area has and and, um, given its current projects that are in the work, um, this area has been identified as, um, being high priority on on Wash Dot's list. So, um, we were then, once we looked at the the areas that are that that need work, then we kind of I can identify what projects, what we need to do in order to bring these these areas into compliance. There's there's other things that potentially could be done, but they're probably going to be extremely cost prohibitive at this point in time, whereas traffic circle or roundabout might be a little bit more easily easy to bear. Something i- i- if, I mean, it all depends on the the capacity, it depends on the tra- future traffic generation. Um, and and the, so that's that's kind of how you scope off the project a little bit. It looks at property acquisition. There's a lot that goes into it. So being that it's a roundabout on an exit, um, that's just that just will just control the traffic a little bit more safely. You know, we know that there's, uh, the the collisions are to reduce speed. We know that people, uh, have to take a little bit more care as before they enter into a roundabout. And it's much more cost effective than a set of lights. Lights are extremely expensive and they the maintenance for lights over time is is pretty high. So that's why a traffic, uh, a roundabout was chosen at this, that that's in short, I will say in short, that is why.
Just one more.
Mr. Galan.
So in your summary, you have a local participation thirteen point five percent, right? That's what we're matching.
Correct.
Thirteen point, but on their website for the Freight Mobility, these guys strategic, uh, investment program. It says matching funds thirty-five percent minimum match is required.
That typically is done by, um, I believe is uh, there's there's a number they they come up with, like, um, I I think it's based on population, but our match is it's thirteen point five percent, which again, that would be under the, um, covered by the eighteen percent that we already have um, put aside.
I I just would hate to apply and then having to match it at the thirty-five percent. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, thirty-five percent seems really high. I I haven't heard of a, that's that's a pretty high match.
Further questions, comments, Frau Stot?
Will any of, I guess, the, will it make any of the difference? I know, uh, just during workshop Deputy Mayor mentioned about uh, the update for the T-two route to the T-three route. Will that shift any of the expectations?
Even though that's that's mentioned here, that has nothing to do with with this application. That would be a different application for that later on.
Okay.
And keep in mind, council, this is, um, a resolution so that we can submit the application and fill that out. So we're not authorizing the job to be done at this point. Um, another thing is roundabouts are have proven to be an excellent way to solve traffic congestion problems at busy intersections. Not ideal, maybe not the best, but they have been very effective and especially as people have learned, use them. I know from my experience, the three and Union Gap that are just one right after the other, I use those regularly. Was a little bit apprehensive about them at first and I actually choose that route on purpose now because I can get through there so much quicker than some of the backstreets that I used to take. I think that, uh, we will see improved traffic controls and at that at the intersections there. It's difficult to make a left turn from exit sixty-nine if you were headed. Um, if you came off the freeway eastbound and you want to turn north, it's difficult to make that left turn because of the crown on the bridge, you can't see oncoming traffic and then so many cars coming to make a left turn to get on the freeway eastbound, it just takes a long time. It can be very frustrating. I think what's going to end up happening too is, uh, not only are we going to have to put a roundabout on the south side and the north side of that intersection, but we're also going to have to consider a roundabout at the other X, I think that's sixty-seven. Um, that's going to require something as well because that can get very backed up in certain times of day as well. So we're going to be seeing more of these kinds of projects coming before us and we have to think long term about, uh, traffic solutions. And this is, this is a first step to get this application filled out, so.
Correct. And if and if there is any changes, again, right now, it's just submitting an application if, when, if we were to be accepted, then we'll bring that back to council. At that point, you'll you'll have the opportunity to to accept it at that point or not, based on the requirements.
Thank you for answering your questions.
Right, further questions? Hearing none, what is council's desire in this item?
Um, I'll make a motion then to authorize submission of the grant application uh, to to the Federal Mobility Strategic Investment Board so we can begin this process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to throw one more thing in there as well, if you if you don't, if you don't mind, um, very briefly. Um, we have received a pro rata share from a developer. If we do not use that pro rata share for a development, we give it back with interest. So that just keep that in mind.
And there's a timeframe for use on that and it has to be used in the particular traffic corridor that was identified by Was Dot as being impacted by the development. Sorry, I've been dying to say that. We don't have a lot of choice in where we use the eighteen percent that we're getting. And if we don't use it within a timeframe, we forfeit it.
What's the timeframe?
Plus interest. Is that what you said?
Years, yeah.
Six years. What year are we in?
Uh, probably like three.
Okay.
Four, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. We don't have a second.
I second.
All right, so we have a motion by Council Hart to approve a resolution authorizing, I'm sorry, a motion by Council Hart, second by Council Frausto to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a funding application to Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board for improvements to exit sixty-nine. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. A two vote aye, motion passes. Thank you. Item G. And council, this one we didn't get a chance to talk to, talk about in our study session, create a climate resilience advisory team. Consider adopting an ordinance amending the Sunnyside Municipal Code, Section two dot five zero dot zero one zero. Citizen Advisory Boards and Commissions created and creating a new section, two dot five zero dot one seven zero. Climate Resilience Advisory Team Specific Requirements. Mr. City Manager. Not over, uh, Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin.
Like, thank you. Um, so I would like to, um, just kind of introduce to you. So I, in twenty twenty-three, the state legislature passed House Bill eleven eighty-one, which is essentially, I'll just kind of, um, read this to you just a little bit, but it, um, it requires all cities within Washington State to make, um, basically, they they requires all cities to add a climate resilience element to our comprehensive plan. So the and and the states, the state is funding it. We do have a grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to write this. So as part of this, we have to, the ci- cities have to establish a team and they basically have to identify what climate resilience means to that city. So as part of that, it's 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 creating a team. And, uh, what I have, I've kind of emulated the other commissions, uh, that the city has has put together, a seven-member team. Um, we would hold public meetings, we would kind of, we would go through workshops, we would identify various different, um, and I think I put it in there specifically, the the um, there, oh, it was, it was, yeah, um, I'll scroll about just a little bit, um. Can you scroll down just a little bit? Okay. Um, so the goals and policies be improve climate preparedness, response, um, recovery efforts and just just look at, um, climate vulnerabilities and define what that means to the city exactly. So, um, as our first step in this, um, we we have to do it. So it's, this is more or less what's called a funded mandate. We have to do it and we kind of have to identify what this means to the city. Um, and then as part of this as well, so the state has given us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to to do this. Uh, we we estimate that we're probably not going to use a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to write this element. But if we do identify other elements and and other plans through through this action, we can use that this this money, this a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out and do work on those other elements. So if the city through this process identifies that they want like something like a pedestrian plan, we can go out and if as long as we cite it and reference back to this this climate resilience element, we can go back and and get that that, um, use that money to write a pedestrian, write a pedestrian plan, for example. So that is just, uh, we expect that that's probably going to happen through this process. Um, but tonight it's to take, kind of take the first steps and put together a team that I can coordinate and meet with and start start knocking out some of these goals that the state has asked us to do.
Questions for Mr. Martin? Ms. Vasquez.
So this team, would it be, of course, residents from Sunnyside and would they all apply as well? Would it be the same similar steps?
Yep, it'd be the similar steps and, um, as of right now, I have the team kind of set to expire when um, when the the, um, the whole element is due, when it's due back to Commerce for their final review, I have it set to expire. But that's that's obviously something, if this is something that the council likes and wants to keep keep meeting on and keep uh, moving forward, that's obviously something we could easily amend at the end of twenty twenty-five if you would like, yeah.
But at the moment, it's a short.
It's a short, it's a short duration, yeah. It's to the end of twenty twenty-five, yep.
Good. Ms. Frauston.
End of two, okay. And how many members would they, this be comprised of?
Right now I have it seven, um, but it's it's up to you, you can amend it as you see fit. Um, but I was kind of broad with it. I wanted to target the agriculture industry and of course residents of Sunnyside, so.
Okay, and this would be appointment by the mayor, kind of like.
The mayor, well, yeah, it would be the Rules Committee though.
Rules Committee.
The Rules Committee, okay.
How how you stand, how you do your standard appointments right now, this would be the same same thing. So I'd work with with, uh, the city clerk and coordinating some applications, making sure that we get those advertised ASAP, so people can sign up, to be honest.
Okay, so, uh, would, um, just trying to understand what all this team will do, obviously, it's just kind of the starting point and we'd expand, um, and build on it. Um, but would, so say there's upcoming projects coming in 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 into the city or within proximities of the city, would this also be like within county? Or is it just like city limits?
So this, this is more or less building a series of goals and policies and ways to get there with within the city's comprehensive.
Goals and policies.
Yeah.
Okay.
More of like a legislative action for the city moving forward. So you're not going to be doing a specific project review.
Oh, okay.
You would be reviewing legislative action that's that you could then implement through your comprehensive plan, yeah.
Okay, okay. And the reason that I ask is, I mean, we've been getting many, many emails about the R and G project and, um, so this is something that would be responsive to it or if this would be something that.
This this would not really look at that, but what what you could do through this is take, take a a look and see if, um, you want Sunnyside to, um, uh, it, if you could identify the types of, um, projects you would ideally want in your city in the future, moving forward. So we would, we would look to um, encourage development of such and such or, um, discourage development of such and such. So you could do that through this. Um, but you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't do a project-specific analysis, but you would go like a broader. Yes, we want to target this this type of action and and incorporate that in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Galan.
Is there a date that we need to use a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yep, by the end of twenty twenty-five, yep. Yeah, but, um, the, so I should, I should clarify that a little bit. Um, the the climate resilience element needs to be created by the end of twenty twenty-five and we need to have spent the money that we are going to spend on that climate resilience element by the end of twenty twenty-five. We can identify those other, those other plans. If we can do that through our, the creation of our goals and policies that we set forward and we identify other plans we want to create, we can then earmark some of that money to go out and create those plans. So say we spend sixty thousand dollars out of this one fifty and then we have ninety thousand left, we can use that ninety thousand beyond twenty twenty-five to go and to write these plans.
So it's not automatically, we have to give it back if we don't use it?
No, no.
Good to know. Further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire council on this item?
I move to approve, consider, approving an ordinance to establish a climate resilience advisory team. Think this is definitely would benefit our community. We are in a climate crisis that we definitely need to be responsive to.
And I'll second. Or.
I think she got it out first.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna do the second of Ms. Vasquez? Okay, all right, so we got a motion by Council Frausto, second by Council Vasquez. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. If you vote aye. Motion passes, thank you. Items from council members, mayors appointments for boards and commissions. Um, we may need to revise that title somehow because it's not me who's going to do all of that by myself. Anyway, I've received to that, to my knowledge, anyway, last time I checked my email, which was this morning, I had two applications in the file. I think, um, we've all seen those. For a couple of people who would like to renew their positions on these commissions, and I'm happy to see that. Um, please, um, encourage friends, family members to, uh, get involved. Uh, anyone in the audience who has been considering that, I encourage you to get involved on councils and commissions. Um, they're very helpful to us as council members. Uh, we need input and this is a little bit more of the volunteers that we've been talking about. These are unpaid positions, but valuable to our city. So if you, the applications on our website. I'm sure somebody would be happy to print one out at City Hall if you really, really didn't want to go on the website. All right, so that's all I've got there. Other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. We'll start with Ms. Vasquez.
Yes, so I believe a few days ago, me and Counselor Frausto were able to go visit Rod's house and we were able to get a tour, we were able to just hear them out and see their upcoming plans that they have for our community and the things that they've done and their efforts and everything that they've been able to do for our youth, the youth that do come across crisis at homes or just unfortunate situations where they do not have a place to stay. And it was very informative and it was really, really amazing to just be able to see what they do and talk to them and kind of get a little tour of that. Because oftentimes they'll request donations, right, for food or clothes or a lot of different items and we don't know really like why. But when we go there, we kind of get more of a glimpse of the reasons why these are so needed in order for their organizations to continue to grow. So that was a really great experience. And I, this morning today, I I actually started something, well, before this morning, I actually started something at my local church where I do announcements and I tell everyone to bring in any extra food that they have, whether it be cereal or canned food, drinks, water, whatever it may be. And I've been having a basket, so all of our uh, the congregation's been able to come and they actually donated a lot of food this Sunday. So today, since it was Monday, I had so much food and I was able to go to the blue box right across. So today, since it was Monday, I had so much food and I was able to go to the blue box right across El Conquistador. And when I opened it, it was so empty, like there was a coloring book in there that was ripped in pieces. And so I was able to just. Take a friend and my dad and we were able to fill up the box and we left it completely full. So this is really nice to spend time there. We literally filled it from the back to the front and just organizing canned food. And we're just talking about how it's important and really, really rewarding to be able to give back. And it wasn't just from me, but it was from a whole congregation. So I just wanted to share that. Let's not forget about that blue pantry box that's right in front of El Conquistador. Because I know that they put in a lot of effort and time to put it there and to establish that location. So I just wanted to give a reminder that it, to look in your pantry, you know, oftentimes. Uh, there's those of us who are just very, very blessed, right, and we have so much food and we don't really realize the need. So I'd encourage you all to go through your pantry and make sure to check expiration dates before you donate. And also take a look at, maybe sometimes we have extra cans of food that we end up not touching. And we just let it go to waste in our pantry, because we want to hold on to it and we say, you know, later, later, and later never comes. So let's um, think about donating some canned food, cereal, water bottles, juices, granola bars. Anything really helps, so that's something that I wanted to share.
Thank you, Ms. Rostam.
Um, yeah, so um, this is kind of a question, suggestion. I had, I was on a phone call with the chief interim manager, city manager um, earlier today. Um, and during our workshop uh, last week, um, we left on the point of city priorities. Um, and I was kind of using uh, uh, Chief Layman as a sounding board. Um, we did go in and we shifted a lot of our priorities, we um, uh, redlined, we added some points. But what I think is important to um, go back and do is um, to. Break down a lot of these points and create a strategic plan for each. So um, I wanted to bring it here to see what uh, my fellow council members and the mayor thought of this. Um, and I think it's important, because when we're trying to uh, center organizational development, in this case, city development. Um, and our, and our scope of work, um, having bullet points is amazing, because it identifies the, the, the key areas. That we need to target in order to improve uh, work across the city. Uh, but when we don't have a breakdown of how we're going to get there or roadmapping it, then I feel like we are really walking. Um, you, you mentioned it earlier, Deputy Mayor, a sidewalk that leads to nowhere, um, right? Uh, so um, I kind of see this as, as maybe the department heads, obviously, I'm not telling you all to do. It's not my, uh, I'm not trying to cross any boundaries there, but um, I would like to see what my fellow council members and the mayor think of this. Of having department heads maybe break this down and we can come back to it. Um, obviously, we're in the middle of hiring a new city manager, so this would be something that maybe we can put in front of them. And we are going to be meeting with the consulting firm this week that's going to ask us what we want from a city manager. So it would be a really great opportunity to have this in front of us and say, these are some key components that we want our city to. Uh, to abide by and really follow, um, and maybe it could even be a point of. Uh, once we get there, um, uh, a question for, you know, the interviewer for, and the applicant. Um, but I really think it's important for us to do a little bit more breakdown of any of those bullets that we left off on last Monday.
I think that's also that the idea has got a lot of merit. Um. We, you know, what we looked at last week was a, was a plan that was two years old. And so it's, it's always got to be looked at, it's always got to be reevaluated, it's always got to be updated. Now, we have a new council from the council that put that, that long-term plan together. And so now, even if the points that we maintain from that, what was there previously, we have a different point of view for those points. That means something different to us and we need to um, bring that out and and flesh it out a little bit. And yeah, you're right, when we're looking at a city manager, we want a city manager that is going to work with this council. And that, that we have the common goals. And if we're looking at someone and they say, yeah, I can't, I can't do that, well then, right away, we know we can cross them off the list. Um, any applicant, of course, is going to try to do the best they can, but it's going to be the best for them and for us if we can hand them documents to say, hey, this is what. We see, this is what our plan is, this was our goal is. So to be able to put something like that, that together would be very beneficial. I think it's not something that we can do in a regular meeting, so it would take either a workshop or a retreat or something like that in order to put that together. And I know the retreat that we had a few weeks ago was incredibly productive. And so if council wants to do something like that again and meet in that way, I'm certainly amenable to that. I think I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. And and staff is not vehemently disagreeing, so I think that, I, I think that has merit, so we can explore that a little bit further.
Thank you.
Would, would you be willing, go ahead, Chief?
So in this conversation that Ms. Frosco and I had, um, we had a couple of things that we came to conclusion on, when she talks about a. A way to interview is if we had that solidified prior to the interview, and a question is, how would you approach? These goals getting put in place, and you would get a pretty good indication of whether that uh, applicant could fulfill what you guys put in front of us. Um, the other thing is, it's great to have where you want to get, but when the, when this new city manager gets hired. They're going to have to put together a strategic plan to get there.
Yeah.
And you know, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to do, uh, if they come in in four months and say, I don't know what he was thinking, I don't know why he did it this way. This, this is how I'm going to do it, but I think that uh. That's the, basically our conversation, I think that's probably appropriate, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. So Ms. Frosco, would you be willing to kind of spearhead those efforts to come together and and set up a time, work with staff and see what? Work, work with the interim city manager, I guess, I should be better say, and come up with the time that we can have that kind of a retreat?
Yeah.
And.
I can come into that.
Okay, that, that would be phenomenal, and then, of course, obviously, staff is going to have to do a little bit of work involved in all of that too. But the, they're a hardworking bunch, Ms. Horner.
Have a question. Um, we had that last one during work hours. And that works really good for us as staff members, because we're already here. And um, we can schedule ourselves out and then we make sure that we're getting everything done that we need to for it. So I didn't know if the council is comfortable continuing to do that, because that's very helpful for us.
I think that's.
Go ahead, yes.
I, I think that's the best way to do it, because um, it, in, in fact, if you needed to get something right away, you could ask staff. Your staff, then can you pull up this or that or something else or other, if there was some materials that were needed to help with some of these bullet points? I think we want to, and and this is to the council, I, I think we want to remember, and I think the, the interim. Uh, city manager said it too, let's be kind of broad-ranged about it. We don't want to get too in the weeds about what our goals are. Because as he said, whoever this next city manager might be, have, you know, you gotta, this is what we want, this is the direction we want to go. Here's the things we'd like to see accomplished, but we don't, we shouldn't give them the roadmap. You know what I mean? They should be able to come up with the roadmap, that's kind of their job, kind of what they're trying to do.
And, yeah, and and I think it's, it does, yeah, no, it does, and I think it's, I mean, we work in collaboration to make sure that roadmap gets done. I mean, they're going to be new coming in, so they're definitely going to look to us for a lot of the guidance of.
And they're probably going to have some of their own ideas too.
Right, right, yeah, and we'll be open to that as well.
Just like with you folks. That's the idea, we want those new ideas.
Well, I didn't see a lot of shaking of heads and 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 squirming around as far as doing it during workday. Uh, I know from my own situation, if I had known far enough in advance, I could schedule that time open and we're good to go. Um, so.
Okay.
Let's, let's make progress in that direction, thank you.
Yeah, and one more quick one, uh, translation services, I didn't see it, I was hoping that it would be on the agenda today, but I didn't see it, what's the status? So we received, oh, is that for next?
Yes, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Um, I received the quote, um, I did want it, sometimes I requested a meeting with the company. Because there is a five thousand dollar startup fee and I wouldn't have been able to schedule something before today. So before I presented it to you, I wanted to make sure I had all the information.
Thank you.
I'll, I have, have that on the twenty-second.
Okay, noted, understood, thank you.
All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So I'm, I've been attending a lot of the, the trainings, the AWC trainings, um. I've been signing up to whatever I can, just, just to get more knowledge, get more, you know, familiar on a lot of the stuff that's going on. Uh, this past week, we had one about how to, I guess, react on the, the, or, or have policies. Uh, with the Zoom video, right, there's a lot of people that go on there and then they just. I mean, attack the city and then, and it's, it's people that don't even share their names, um. And many of the times, a lot of these cities have been putting in policies on how to, how to react, how to act, you know, what to do. In, in situations like that, uh, so maybe that's, you know, whenever we do meet for the Rules Committee, we could uh, talk a little bit about that. And and definitely have a plan in place. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of good knowledge, a lot of good videos that they provide, so. I'll be doing the, you know, those as much as possible.
Awesome, counsel. Thank you. Ms. Hurt.
I got a practical question, something I noticed today when I was driving down the, the part of. The most recent reconstruction on South Sixth Street, there in front of uh, Ace Hardware. And I think it's Valley Auto Supply, is that the name of it there? And then that other market that's right there, I just was noticing that as I'm going along, I all of a sudden am driving over. Per, uh, not parallel, angle parking, uh, lines. As I'm trying to get to. The stop sign. And I'm thinking, oh, I'm sure glad there's not a car here, because I would be happy to scooch out a little bit. But is that maybe on the, it's on the um, east side of, on, um, Ace Hardware? It's on the Ace Hardware side and it's, it's all angle parking there. And it really does, it to me, it looks like it's a conflict of traffic flow. I'm going to run over somebody who might be parking there. It, I'm thinking, maybe can we look at the possibility of that being angle parking? It is already, excuse me, thank you. Wow, it is getting late and my sundowners are starting in. Um, uh, but maybe the, with the par- the parallel parking on that east side. I know right now, it's, it's, it's um, angle parking, but I just was, all I wanted to do was just go straight. Across the highway there, and I was coming off the railroad tracks, which is really nice now. And I go, oh, why are these sticking out so far? If there's a truck parked here, I would. Not have nowhere to go. Do you know what I mean?
Those are some deep parking spots.
They're, they're deep, yeah, not that the vehicle itself is, but it's, they're, they are long.
Yeah.
Parking stalls.
Yeah, is that something we can take a look at? Yeah, I just, I just noticed that today, because I'm. Been going that way very often.
I always thought it was kind of cool, I could angle park with my trailer.
Sweet.
You know, I think about those.
I know, but anyway, it was, it was just something I noticed today, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. So just a couple of comments, uh, for me, I just want to comment, um, I'm glad Ms. Vasquez brought up Rod's House. And the food box, I know my wife and I have been contributing to that food box pretty regularly. Every time I go there, I find it empty. We brought literally um, all the unused fruit packs that come from the school district in Granger. And have put them in there and they're all sealed and it's all, and we do it in the winter time, obviously, so that they're staying cool, but. It's always empty. I can put fifty or so of those little fruit packs in it, the next day it's empty, so there, that thing is being used. It's a great idea, whoever puts that up, those high school kids, I got to be there for the ribbon cutting on that, it was awesome. Um, it's a great idea, we just need to continue to stock it. Um, the other thing for Rod's House is, uh, my wife has for a period of time been providing meals. Uh, you can go on their website and it shows where in Sunnyside X day is scheduled, somebody's got a meal plan. And so we'll bring meals over there fairly regularly. You don't have to have it cooked. So she'll make a lasagna or something, tell me to drop it off, I bring it over there, lasagna salad, French bread, whatever you, whatever you do with the lasagna. And they'll cook it, they serve it, you put it in a tin, you don't have to wash the dishes, they just toss it out when they're done. Um, it's great to be able to do that. I suspect if it's, it's people like my family, that's basically a Midwest-style lasagna thing that they bring, so maybe they want some variety. So if you cook something besides that, that might be a wonderful idea for them. But Rod's House is an amazing organization, has done awesome work here in the entire Yakima Valley. Um, I've done a fair amount of work with them and for them throughout Yakima, but uh, in Sunnyside too, I've got, had the privilege of serving with them and helping them in different areas. And it's been, it, it, I just am really pleased with what they're doing there, especially for the homeless teens. Um, it's just an amazing opportunity. So yeah, thank you for doing that tour, I think that was a great report on that and. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, so. All right, item C, upcoming council meetings, April twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four, we have a special meeting, it's just like this evening, we start at five thirty, we've got our study session. And then on April twenty-two, at six thirty, we have our regular meeting, and Madam City Clerk.
Like some things were added, um, so we have the stormwater rate analysis, fireworks and yard sales. And interpreting services, and then we'll also be bringing back the repealed ordinances, by then we should already have a quote from Code Publishing for that section. Water system plan, unfreeze positions, the recreation coordinator and technology support assistant. A budget amendment and ecology grant agreement for stormwater master plan and HLA task order for that master plan. And then you'll just, um, those are, that's a discussion item, I'll change that, and then. That during your regular meeting, you'll take action.
All right, thank you. And once again, a reminder that if there's any items that council members wish to add, please do so, uh, no later than the Wednesday before the meeting. That allows them to get that all properly noticed and we need to stay according to the law. Item number five, item from department head, Mr. City Manager, we'll start with Mr. Knight on the end.
Yeah, good evening, council members. Uh, we closed out uh, twenty-three tickets this week, we have forty-five that are still open. Uh, main issues, outages and projects that we're working on, the outage right now is the cameras and the network down at the pool and the parks, we're kind of getting that back up. Uh, we're still working on the uh, dual security implementation, that is getting ready to go live for everybody here shortly. And then we're still working on the seizures requirements. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Ms. Horner.
I um, don't have much to report, except that um, I am trying really hard to get that. Stormwater rate implementation plan together by next, the next meeting. I just want to warn you, I may not have it ready, and so that might be pulled. It is very complicated to figure out how to implement that. And we are sort of struggling, we're also in the middle of a, a software migration um, to a new utility billing software. So there's an whole added layer of complexity there. Um, I'm not going to put it off any longer if possible, because we do need to get those rates adjusted. But just in case that, you don't see that on the, on the next one, that is still a project, I'm working on it very hard.
We'll know why.
Yeah, that's all I've got, thank you.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have a lot either, I just want to give you an update on our pool house, um, painting project, how it's been coming along. Um, the outside has been completely finished, they're working on the inside. Uh, they've been grinding a lot of the tile that was painted and and working on that, so that's going good. Um, also just want to update you that um, obviously I started um. Uh, getting quotes for some of the priority uh, ARPA that you guys picked on. So obviously, it takes a while to work through that, and there's a few that are under public work, so um, trying to get all that, so we can get that done by the end of the year. So that's.
One question, sure. The, the, the pool house on the other side, I think it's where the.
Mechanicals, right?
Are, are we going to do anything with that? Maybe, I don't know, task the arts commission to.
So.
Something.
Yeah, I, I did, I'm waiting for the uh, rec supervisor to come back, so we can go over that. Because we did get a quote for the, the um. The art that's on there, um, was tagged, so um, the artist that, that did that has. Um, proposed another design that would be probably easier to uh, touch up. Um, versus the one that's on there now, and so there'll be some painting that'll be taking place once she gets back, so we can go over that. Uh, so yes, that's, that's not part of the, the, the pool house project, but it is something that we're working with as far as with the art that's on there.
Thank you.
And that's all I had.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, just a few things, so to date, we have created a hundred and twenty records. Done two hundred and eighty-seven inspections, issued eighty-eight permits and collected a little over thirty, thirty-six thousand dollars in uh, building permits. Um, currently, right now, I am um. On the, I'm working with Yakima County and I'm helping with the Yakima, Yakima. Homeless Coalition Scoring Committee, um, so Yakima County Human Services, they have a pot of money that they can basically allocate to providers. And I'm working um, right now with them on, on kind of. Looking at it as a perspective of, of Sunnyside's needs and giving, given some of this, our recent experiences. So I will be working and for helping, helping with that process. And then I am going to be out of the office from the twelfth to the sixteenth, so that's this Friday. And then I am going to be out of the office from the twelfth to the sixteenth, so that's this Friday and then Monday and Tuesday next week.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time, less than any questions, excuse me.
Questions for Mr. Riley?
You're off the hook tonight.
Senatoria.
Hey, um, we did the rib, I moved the ribbon cuttings form to an online form so that anybody can submit, and then I will be handing that off to Mari to handle, since it was a city manager task that was given to me, now that she's the executive assistant, I'll be giving it to her. Um, I just want to remind you that uh, today is the last day to nominate citizens of Sunnyside for the Spirit of Sunnyside Awards, and so I'll kind of zoom in if anybody wants to scan the Q R code to be able to um, nominate anybody or decorate a table or purchase tickets, so I'll leave that on the screen. Also, Cinco de Mayo is coming up, and so we are following Rotary's lead on social media posts and things are being finalized, like uh, graphics for um, the carnival and ticket prices and all of that, so I'll be, I'm working with Perla from Rotary to get those done with Yakima Valley Tourism. Um, and then we are assisting the court with converting files that are old, uh, from PDFs and labeling them. Um, also, we're highlighting the commission, boards and commission vacancies and reaching out to previous members and asking them if they'd like to reapply um, for the vacancies, and that's it for now.
Today's the last day to, to nominate it.
Yeah, to nominate, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms.
I'm so sorry, I missed something that I promised you guys I was gonna report on, and I, I just forgot. The Festival of Trees and the um, Animal Shelter, I met with somebody from the hospital last week and we went over the numbers and um, preliminarily, that event raised about twenty-one thousand dollars, so we'll split that amount between us and the hospital. Um, so that'll be, I, it, right now, it's sitting at about ten thousand six hundred dollars that will come to the city for our portion of that to go towards our animal shelter. Um, when I get it finalized, finalized, and we get in, we get that money actually split out between us, I'll, I'll let you guys know. Um, we do actually get some other donations for the animal shelter, um, at this time too, and so I'll be able to provide you with all of that added together, once this is all um, once this is all finalized, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that we had met with the, the hospital regarding the Festival of Trees. And I did touch base with her about the profitability of doing a combined event like we did this year and whether or not it took profits away from, from them, because it used to be sort of their own thing, and she actually said that if, if this is the amount that they made, it's, it seems as good, if not better um, than some of their previous events where they've just handled them on their own, so we were a little worried of whether or not splitting that would take away from some of their own fundraising um, for their project, which is also very important, but it seems like it benefited both, both groups.
Awesome.
I have, I have one question, do, do you know if, did you, were you able to follow up, or do you know if anyone was able to see the votings of the animal shelter?
I did not get that.
Um, I was at the community center on Saturday for a new police officer testing and it was gonna, supposedly gonna be picked up at the end of the testing on Saturday.
Okay.
Um, she did, okay, Lucy brought it back to City Hall there on Saturday.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I'm sorry, I gave her the day off today because she worked over the weekend, so.
You're good.
Um, okay, I've got a couple of things, so first off, if anybody's interested in nominating anybody, they still need somebody for a hero nomination and public employee or official nomination, uh, for the uh, Spirit of Sunnyside Awards. Um, I do not have stats for you tonight, but um, hiring, we are down to six vacancies right now. Um, in uh, in sworn personnel, so commissioned personnel. And we have two openings in corrections and one in dispatch. So we're in the process of hiring for those, we had a corrections test on Friday and we had a patrol officer test on Saturday. Um, the helmets that we received the GISA grant for, uh, arrived today, so those have been getting issued out today, the ballistic helmets for patrol officers. Um, the foundation on June fourteenth, last day of school, is gonna be hosting a movie night at uh, Central Park, so they'll have a movie. Uh, everything is gonna be free for the kiddos that come, um, everything will be taken care of um, by the foundation, uh, so that'll be a movie night on June fourteenth, last day of school. Um, the meal giveaway went well that we had, um, we were able to set aside about twenty meals that were taken down, uh, by Deputy Mayor's wife to the, the senior center, so we were able to take some meals down there and then we gave away about a hundred and thirty. Um, and then there was a free library, like a little kid's library that you put books in, that they can come take books, put books in. Um, that was donated by uh, Stein's Ace Hardware in Yakima in conjunction with this Ace Hardware, the, the owners are related. And they built it and donated it to um, Mr. Sanchez's department, and I don't know if it's gotten mounted yet, but it's going to be getting mounted at the, um, so, this week, okay. Uh, over at the community center, so when little kids are over there playing T-ball or whatever, brothers and sisters can go check out a book and have something to do while they're uh, keep them entertained, so that's all I have to report right now.
Thank you, sir, thank you to everybody, um, always comforting to see all the stuff that's going on, I think there's so much that goes on behind the scenes that we don't always uh, recognize and how much yeah, people are asking us questions, why don't we ever do this? Well, we've got staff that's doing it, and it's good to see these reports and have this all happening, and I'm really impressed with what you guys have been able to do with your foundation. Um, I think that's something that, well, you feel, you're feeling a need there that we maybe didn't realize that we had to this extent.
Trust me, we're just getting started.
It's good to hear. Alright, the next item on our agenda is an executive session, uh, due to last fifteen minutes. Uh, as per R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero parentheses, one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions. Or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. And there is no action expected this evening, so thank you, everyone, you are dismissed.
Yes, staff.
No act. And if there's no further business, or there being no further business to come before this body, and without objection, we are adjourned at eight twenty-six.